Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole. Meeting for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021 to order. At this time, we'll entertain a moment of silence. A lot of thoughts and feelings going on right now around the world, so love and peace is the theme here, and please, a moment of silence. And I'll ask Alderman Gripp if he'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. And Brian Crupp, our wonderful city clerk, if you please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Jopkin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So, good evening again, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing on your different devices. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please, if you would, keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with everyone throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, and as such, your participation, please reflect the common desire we all want to make Davenport a great place for everyone. If you do, for folks in here, if you have your cellphone or electronic device, if you'd either put it on silent or turn it off, just so it doesn't get in the way of the people talking here today, this evening. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium right here. The microphone's above you. You'll have the opportunity to talk to the city council and to the public with business and an agenda item. When addressing the council, please address us as an entire body and not any individual. We welcome your comments. Please remember, you have five minutes, and we'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you very much. Ms. Spiegel, our city administrator, any update?
One quick thing, from a city perspective, we are actively hiring for our summer recreation programs, both lifeguards at the pools and everything else, so if you can think of young adults or other members in the community who would be interested in becoming city employees and providing great service as part of our Parks and Recs team, you can go to the city website and see all of the jobs available currently.
Thank you, Ms. Spiegel. It's really cool to talk about, like, lifeguarding and pools and things, you know? So, wonderful. All right, we have seven public hearings this evening, three in community development and four in public works. So, community development, Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, three public hearings for community development this evening. Public hearing number one, I open on the proposed conveyance of the unimproved vacated public right-of-ways located within previously vacated subdivision plat known as Island View Subdivision, city of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two, on the amended annual action plan for year 46 for the CDBG and home programs. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number three is on the annual action plan for year 47 for the CDBG and home programs. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. That concludes the public hearings in community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next four are in public works. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four public hearings this evening. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the EMI's golf course maintenance facility. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2021/2022 manhole rehabilitation replacement and CIP lighting program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Emerald Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. And I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the River Heritage Park Phase III project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and that concludes the public hearings this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. So, the next area is petitions and communications. I just have one, so everybody knows, I've been talking to some folks about the seventh ward candidate and appointing, so I today had a great conversation with a gentleman, so my intent is to introduce him next Wednesday, and then the council folks will have information prior to that on my recommendation to them, so just so you know it's moving along. Let's see, I see Alderman Condon.
I was going to attempt to, thank you, Your Honor, tell a quick anecdote. So, one of the best things about living in Iowa is the caucus. Whatever your political affiliation, it's really pretty exciting to be able to be involved and meet these politicians. So, about 10 or more years ago, I was at the fairgrounds and met a friend there to attend their dinner, and we were some of the first ones there, and we were very excited. We were more involved than anyone else we knew, and we really thought we were doing it right. And this guy named Walter walked up to us really awkwardly and introduced himself to us in a strange way, and we're just like, okay, whatever, Walter, nice to meet you, guy. And later that evening, they introduced him as Walter Mondale, our 42nd Vice President of the United States of America, as the keynote speaker. And Walter Mondale passed this week, and I thought I could share that anecdote to both Mark his passing and just offer a reminder to you, the public, that if you see me or one of my colleagues at some of these ribbon cuttings, as Walter taught me, it's kind of awkward, and we don't always know what to do, so feel free to throw us a line and introduce yourself to us. Thank you.
As usual, well said, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I want to congratulate Alderman Jopkin on his promotion and wish him good luck. And the other thing, there's some great news coming out of Congress. You know, they got on the agenda, both in the Senate and the House, they're going to pass legalizing marijuana, and I just heard today that they're going to make 420 a holiday so people can have off, so they can celebrate the legalization of marijuana by getting high. And the funny part is, growing up in the 50s and 60s, you know, Cheech and Chong were pretty popular back then, and I would encourage anybody to Google Cheech and Chong and maybe watch a couple of their movies and see what the future of the United States will be. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I wanted to give some recognition to Steve Arons and the Riverfront Improvement Commission for putting together an excellent event this past Saturday. Brian Crupp was there longer than he thought he would be, and the reason being, so many people showed up to clean up and spend the morning on our riverfront. We expected 100 people, 125 people showed up. I think it shows the value of the riverfront to our community, that it's viewed as a special place, that people wanted to come and spend a beautiful spring morning cleaning it up, picking up garbage. So, I had an excellent time. Several of the folks on the council were there, and we were able to just dust off the riverfront a little bit, because we think it's going to be a really special summer. And for those who are looking for more opportunities, I wanted to point out that we've got different events where you can volunteer your time with public works over the next several weekends. Duck Creek Wild, Zone Restoration, Cleanup and Green Up for Arbor Day, Tree Planning, Garlic Mustard Pole, and Spring Snapshot Water Quality Monitoring Event. So, there's plenty of opportunities to get involved and give back to your community, and I want to thank the 125 people who showed up on the riverfront this past weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move on to our four areas for discussion this evening. The first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will take care of that agenda. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 20-01, being the request of Dan Lorenson on behalf of Rock Church Ministries, Inc., to rezone Lot 2 of NIM's Acres from SOS Open Space District to... ...the passage of this ordinance. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Hello, my name is Joshua Ogwolo. I live at 2131 West Hayes in Davenport. I represent both the firm, Streamline Architects, that were responsible for the design of the church, and I'm also a member of the church body. I just want to talk a little bit about the project. It's being considered for rezoning because of what was just stated, and the purpose for that is because churches aren't being, aren't able to be built on open space. We're currently housed in a gym. We have a congregation of 150 to 200 people currently. If we were to grow anymore, we wouldn't have that much space. The gym limited, limits us in time, because it's only open to us on Sundays. And I can't say enough about the church, what it's done for me as a person, and what it's done for the people of the congregation. We had a three-week series leading up to Easter, where at the end of each service, folks gave testimonies, and I can testify that it's changing people's lives. Our church is doing amazing things with that little building, and for us to be able to have a facility that will be operational, you know, seven days a week and not just on Sunday mornings, it will, we know that we're going to grow, and we know that it's still of value in the community around it. So, I just wanted to introduce that part of the project to you guys. The, I don't know if you have information in front of you about what's going on with the easements that we're requesting, but we've been in work, the works with the property owners to the north and to the west of us to get this easement agreement drafted by our attorneys with the corporation that owns those properties, and he's, Dan Narberson, he's with SCI, has been really awesome with working with us. He really wants to see it happen, too. He sees the value of having that church adjacent to his property because of the utilities that will be coming in, and that it would be offered to him as part of the easement agreement, so that his land would increase in value, and that it would present for him opportunities to develop it in other ways also. So, okay? Questions?
So, we will give anybody else an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
And then I will give the council an opportunity to speak, and if there are any questions, we'll have you come back up and we'll ask those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address or ward, please.
Danny Lorenson. Where do I live? 4846 Fairhaven Court in Davenport. I'm the senior pastor of Rock Church, the one that requesting rezoning. I just wanted to bring up that when we initially, this piece of property used to be my piece of property. When we initially bought it, it was zoned residential, from what we knew, at least, on the paperwork that we'd gotten. So, when this all came up, that it was zoned differently, it was kind of a shock to us. You know, we had a pretty smooth thing going, going on, as what we felt like moving toward building the church, and obviously acquiring a piece of ground is always a big thing, so we got, we received a piece of ground, it was donated, so that was awesome. Then we just needed those steps to get the easement from the neighbors, which they were awesome, and that kind of brings us to this point. So, we were kind of shocked about the whole thing, but obviously, we're willing to work with getting it accomplished, and we think, of course, I think it's a great idea, and I've been a pastor for about 38 years, been in the Quad Cities, back, this is home, but back here since 1990. Someone mentioned love and peace earlier, something we need in our community more and more, and that's a peaceful area back there. It's close to the cemetery. Something about cemeteries are peaceful to me, I don't know what it is, but churches and cemeteries have always gone well together if you go driving out, out the county. But we just want an opportunity to do something different. We've kept in mind that there's a lot of nature around us, you know, we'll try, we'll try to deal with that the best we can, and we also know there's a lot of people trying to camp back there, which we think that would help get them out of those areas and close to neighborhoods, so we think it'd be a good presence for us to be there. It's going to be a beautiful setup, outdoor amphitheater, we'll be able to weddings and events and church services, of course, and so we have a pretty big vision for it, and a lot of the work's been done, money's being saved, we're getting close to having the initial amount of money we need to launch the project, and I could go on and on and on, and this is probably the best idea you've ever heard, so I just want you to get in agreement with it, so blessings on you. Thanks, thanks for listening.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to the council. Anyone from the council who wishes to address this item? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think it's a great project, and I know people that attend the church, and, you know, they speak incredibly highly of it, and I hope your congregation continues to grow. Thanks.
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have a picture of the site that we could put up so that people can see how it's set up and the easements and how all that interplays? So, in this case, Lauren, would you mind, Lauren, Laura, excuse me, would you mind coming up and just describing? Just the situation.
Yep, more Berkeley Development Neighborhood Planning. So, the property highlighted in red is the subject property that's being requested to be rezoned, currently zoned open space. It would go, that requests us to R1, which is the lowest level of intensity that would allow for a church to be built on that lot. As you can see, it is four lots south of 46th Street. When it was subdivided, it provided an access easement along the railroad tracks that is very narrow, so it didn't have legitimate access to it. So, they're working through that process now and acquiring the easements and proving ownership of the adjacent property owners. The proposal is to do a 30-foot wide ingress/egress private access that would also include utilities to that site.
Thank you. And so, providing utilities to that site and at least private access would also facilitate development of the three lots closer to the street, right?
It could, yes.
It could facilitate it, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Laura, I didn't ask this earlier. I'm sorry, I didn't ask this earlier, and I should have. I'm assuming that the land north, are we just rezoning the subject property?
That is correct, yep.
Would that not be a spot zoning?
And it's not considered spot zoning, because across the railroad tracks to the east of the property is zoned R4.
Okay, because there's some adjacent land, is that? Okay, all right. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Yes, Laura, could you explain the rationale the city had when we were doing the zoning of this property?
Sure. So, and we aligned zoning, so previous to the 2019 adoption of the zoning code, there was no open space zoning. So, Pastor Lorenson is correct, it was zoned R1 at the time. When the rezoning went through, though, associated with the code adoption, it was aligned to match closer to their future land use map. That has been identified for quite some time as open space in that future land use.
And the, do we have, so we really had a plan for open space so much in the old zoning, is that correct? And what are the dangers of not having that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Did we, we didn't have this open space zoning before?
Correct.
So, why did, why did, was the decision to include it in the new zoning overlay of the city?
When they made updates to the comprehensive plan, emphasis on open space was one of those areas that was incorporated in, and I think it just added some clarity into where development was expected to occur and planned to occur.
Thank you.
Alderman Dorman.
Thanks, Alderman Gripp. Laura, I am now a year and a half into being Alderman, but I found something new about zoning every time we talk about it. Today's buzzword is spot zoning. Can you explain what that is?
Yep, spot zoning is a state term, so you can't read, it's in state code, and I think Brian Hare might help explain this a little bit. We're required, under state code, to have adjacent uses, so you can't have like a area of agriculture with industrial in the middle of it. It needs to have some kind of contiguous use associated with it.
Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you for letting me answer another question. Laura, so I guess in essence, if we change this zoning, then it could put in jeopardy the zoning of the two properties to the north, because they would not then be connected to the other open areas, right? So, we're in effect determining the future of that, and now suddenly, we have nothing of that that is open area, potentially, is that correct?
That's potentially correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
Could you explain those, why planning and zoning recommends not?
So, we have a list of standards that are looked at when we look at rezonings. It did not meet most of those criteria, one of which is looking at our future land use plan and comprehensive plan. We look at health and safety, the area character of the neighborhood, and if it's going to create any new non-conformities, things like that.
All right, I think, I think you're good, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time. So, I'll, I'll provide some comments, and Mr. Ogwolo, if I could ask you a question, you have to come up to our microphone, please. So, you know, when you're, when you're doing a rezoning and you're talking land use, it doesn't have to be tied to a project, but almost 100% of the time it is.
Yeah.
And so, we do, you know, consider that and take that into account. So, you know, one of the issues with this is we've got this designated as open space, and if we, if we rezone it for you, and then, then you end up not building your church, then that is, that is zoned differently than the open space, and it does open, open the space that's been designated for open space up for development. And so, that, that is a little bit of a concern. If you could just provide a little bit more clarity on where you are in the process of fundraising and design, and when you would be, when you would want to build, and et cetera.
Right. As far as design goes, the construction documents are pretty much fully developed, and we've sent it out for bid to a couple parties who are very interested in bidding and have been working with us in allowing us to provide some of the work from the church, people at the church, because we have people that are skilled contractors within the church body, so that's been great. As far as fundraising goes, I think we are about 75% to our goal of, if I could ask Dan, he would know exactly.
Dan? Fundraising percentage?
Yeah, our goal was, we needed to hit $200,000 before we started any building after we even were about $40,000 away from that.
Right, so more than 75% of our goal.
Okay.
With, with future pledges coming in every week, so.
Okay. Give me one second to regain my train of thought here, because I did have another question for you. Okay, now I remember. So, this kind of reminds me of the Unitarian Church on Eastern that has a long private drive up to it, and if you go up there, it's kind of secluded by trees. It's a, it's a really nice place, it's a good place for church. So, isn't that part of what, what you're trying to create here, is kind of a peaceful church setting?
Yes.
And one of the issues is that by rezoning this, what you're doing is you're opening up those northern properties to development, which it sounds like your neighboring landowner is interesting, interested in. Essentially, you would be building, you would be doing a rezoning that would give that landowner grounds to rezone himself or as a corporation, but then you would also be giving him access from 46th Street, and, and so you might be creating a situation where you give up the very setting that you were hoping to create.
So, Dan Narberson is the Director of Real Estate with SCI, which is a funeral complex operator and acquirer. They operate funeral, funeral or cemeteries in this country, Mexico and Canada, and he has expressed no interest in redeveloping those properties in any other way except for expanding Davenport Memorial Park. The utilities would, would allow him to use certain amenities for keeping the grounds, basically, or even access to the rear. So, but he has never, he's never expressed any interest in developing it for residential causes or anything else beyond cemetery to us, so.
Okay.
Which he's, he's very, he's allowed to do within the zoning requirements, so.
And I mean, now we're getting into the details of this, which, which I think is important here, because this is a, it's an incredibly unique case. I haven't seen anything like this in my time on the council. So, you know, one of the issues is that you say $200,000 to build the church is your fundraising goal. Knowing the slope right off of 46th Street and how you're going to have to, to cut into that, into that land, and then build a private access drive, and then get utilities to your building. It doesn't seem to me that you would be able to, to build a, a building that would house 150 to 200 congregants in it for $200,000.
$200,000 is the goal that we would hope to receive from the congregation. The church is providing the rest. I think we have a budget of about 1.5 million, if I'm correct.
Okay, all right.
So.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, yep.
So, I think what, what, some of the concerns that planning and zoning have are the, the private drive, getting there, the, the access to it, which from what I understand, there's still some, I think you, you have agreement with them, but it's in the wrong legal name, and that needs to be cleaned up.
Right. Yep.
Okay, so that, that needs to be worked through. You've got the making sure that we have a safe access to the building.
Yes.
And I think, you know, if I were going to approve it, I would want to see that we can safely not only get people to the church, but also that we can get emergency vehicles back there.
Fire truck.
Et cetera.
Yep.
So, to me, I don't, I don't reject that. To me, I don't, I don't reject this on its face. I just think there's a lot of details that have to be worked through to make this, to make this, I think, a suitable development, which is why you saw the staff's opinion and the P&amp;Z opinion.
Yep.
Any other comments from the council? All right, seeing none, this item will make, remain on discussion.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number two, which is a resolution approving a home-funded development agreement for the 601 Brady Project. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Gripp. I'm just, I'm very excited to see this come forward. This is a fantastic mid-century building that, this is a project that, that I know the developer, the petitioner's been working on for a long time. They did list this property in the National Register, they'll be using historic tax credits as well. It, it's a wonderful building and probably one of the last big investments. As downtown was kind of falling apart, the Priester Company, which had a long history, constructed this building as the Priester Building, and it, it has continued to, you know, house, it's beautifully intact inside. So very excited to see this happen. It's kind of been underused for a few years, so I'm pleased to see this and pleased to support it.
I, I echo Alderwoman McGinnis's comments, and I'm glad to see a bigger redevelopment project happening north of 5th Street. So very exciting. This item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving a home-funded development agreement for the construction of three single-family homes in the 800 block of East 6th Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Ingle National, Tennessee, Ward 4, Davenport. Just a very brief one. I don't know if there are any monies available, and Habitat for Humanity is just doing a terrific job doing these infill houses, and the people that are, are working to receive these houses couldn't be more deserving. As an architect, though, it seems to me perhaps, given the fact that in our older parts of town, we've got really old buildings, that if they were restored back to the way they were, our houses, people would be just going crazy to, you know, wanting to buy them. So I don't know if there's any way that the city can provide some kind of guidance or even a little bit of funds to make those Habitat homes just a little nicer? Just, you know, as much as it costs to build a brand-new house, just a few thousand dollars in the right place could make those things really shine. And so that later on, when 6th Street becomes a desirable area for everybody, everybody can live together in a beautiful home. Thanks so much.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? All right, seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the unimproved vacated public right-of-ways located within the previously vacated, number four. Okay, let me go back to number four. I wrote, I wrote Mr. Handel's comments under the wrong agenda item, that got me tripped up, so. Item number four, resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Iowa Department of Transportation's RISE program to support public infrastructure improvements necessary for the construction of a distribution and warehousing operation near the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Okay, seeing no one, this item will move on. And then we'll go to item number five, a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the unimproved vacated public right-of-ways located within the previously vacated subdivision platte known as Island View Subdivision, City of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Okay, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. So I'm going to ask that we table this one next week. I know staff's working on some issues that we're trying to resolve with that property, getting us some information, so just ask, leave it on discussion, please.
Leave it on discussion, noting that it'll be, there will be, be a table next week. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this item? All right, item number six is a resolution setting a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-ways that be in a part of East 11th Street between Perry Street and Pershing Avenue, a portion of an alley in Block 89 of Leclerc's 8th Edition, and a portion of an alley in Block 96 of Leclerc's 8th Edition. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number seven is a motion approving the amended annual action plan for year 46 for the CDBG and home programs. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. And our final agenda item is number eight, motion approving the annual action plan for year 47 for the CDBG and home programs and authorizing the city administrator or her designee to sign necessary documents and agreements. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set the agenda?
Thank you, Chair Gripp. Whoops. Did I do it right? Did I get it? Do it, okay. Thank you, Chair Gripp. Okay, I move that item one and item five be placed on the discuss on agenda, and the rest of them be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed? That concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman, Alderwoman Lee. The next area, second area is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman will lead the discussion. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start the agenda with item number one, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "No Parking" by adding East 56th Street along both sides from Utica Ridge Road east to the city limits. Anybody from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Item number two, resolution approving street, lane, or public ground, just, public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. Sandra Gonzalez, birthday party, 418 Oak Street, Friday, April 30th, 2021, 2:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., closure, Oak Street from 5th Street to just north of the alley. Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Council. Next, we have St. Paul Lutheran Church Outdoor Worship Service, 2136 Brady Street, Sunday, May 9th, 2021, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., closure, Lombard Street between Brady Street and Main Street. Anyone from the public? Council. Next, we have River Music Experience QCCT Donor Reception, 129 Main Street, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., closure, Main Street from River Drive to 2nd Street. Redstone Parking Ramp will be accessible from Brady Street exit for U.S. Bank. Drive-through will remain open until 3:30 p.m. Anyone from public? Council. Next, City of Davenport Parks and Recreation Youth Fest, 2021, Fegyverry Park, 1800 West 12th Street, Wednesday, July 14th, 2021, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., closure, Park Road from Wilkes Avenue at West, West 12th Street to just north of the Family Aquatics Center parking lot. Anyone from public? Council. Last on this item, Quad City Arts River Sense Festival of Fine Arts, Lindsay Park, 2200 East 11th Street, 8:00 a.m., Friday, September 17th, 2021, 7:00 p.m., Sunday, September 19th, 2021, closure, East 11th Street between Jersey Ridge Road and Hillcrest Avenue. Anybody from public? Council. That item will move on. Item number three, motion approving a noise variance request for an event on the listed date and time. River Music Experience QCCT Donor Reception, 129 Main Street, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., outdoor music band, over 50 DBA. Anybody from the public wishing to comment? Anyone from council? That item will move on. On the last item, number four, I will read the items under, under A and C. The items under B are just for, listed for people's knowledge. So under A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location, transfer, et cetera. Ward 2, Leclerc Grocery, MK Grocery Incorporated, 1715 West Kimberly Road, license type, Class C Beer. Anybody from public wishing to comment? Council. And then the one item under number C, request for exemptions for 19 and 20-year-olds on premises. And Ward 3, RME Courtyard, River Music Experience, 121 West 2nd Street, license type, Class C Liquor. Anyone from public? Council? I will entertain a motion to set the agenda. We have a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed? That concludes public safety, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jobson. Mr. Shorter, can I help you?
Yeah, when can I see?
It's not time for public comment yet.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I'll, I'll make sure you're aware. Yep.
Point of clarification, Alderman Jobson, were you moving everything to consent agenda?
Yes, as a point of clarification, all items placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will lead the discussion. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 11 items this evening for Public Works. Item number one is a resolution awarding the contract for repairs on the credit island causeway to try to city blacked up Bednor, Iowa, in the amount of $211,744.77. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution awarding the contract for the CY 2021 ADA Ramp Program to Kelly Construction of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $255,070. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the E. Myers Golf Course Maintenance Facility. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2021, 2022 Manhole Rehabilitation Replacement CIP Lining Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Emerald Drive Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the River Heritage Park Phase 3 project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a motion awarding the contract for the River Heritage Park Seawall Repair Project to Bystate Masonary Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $84,970. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion awarding the scope of services for the River Heritage Park Safety Railing Removal and Resetting Project Crawford Company of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $55,147. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Clay, is Clay here? Hi. Could you come up and just do a quick summary of the information you provided about the overall cost of the Heritage Park? That we talked about yesterday. Thank you.
Clay, Mayor Public Works. So in about 2010 to 2011, the city had a master plan put together for the park. It's anywhere, total build-out cost of the park conceptually is about 20 to 25 million. Since that time, the city's put in a little over, or it's been constructed a little over a million dollars worth of, of investment into that park, half of which has come from outside sources. This is what's on your agenda now, is the next set of phases, which is part of the fiscal year 21 budget.
And the, and the current plans?
The current plans, I don't know if Brian has available, if not, I don't want to put them on the spot. So what we're looking to do is essentially the main part of the project is to extend the Riverwalk and its associated railing. Oh, excellent, thank you, Brian. If you could go a couple slides in. So that's the master plan. Go to the next slide. It'll show existing conditions, so it kind of, it's very bare right there where the existing Riverwalk ends. Can you go to the next slide? So that's Phase 3, the next one. And then show you, so this is what we're looking to accomplish with what was budgeted in the current fiscal year, most of which is extending that Riverwalk as well as regrading and replanting the Great Lawn in anticipation for the arrival of the boats, which you'll see on the next slide. We're, we'll also be doing some utility work on the next one, sorry. Yep, and you'll see how they interact with that once it's completed.
Thank you very much, and thanks for getting so many grants to help with this. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee and Clay. Alderman Abrams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Clay, I don't know if you can answer this, but you talked about outside funding sources. Can you clarify?
On previous phases, I believe RDA provided over a little, over $100,000. The city was able to secure a REAP grant through the state of Iowa for about $300,000 previously as well. And I believe also the Rotary Club has also funded and constructed the gazebo there on their own, which was not in association with the, the funds that were provided, I mean, the information provided earlier today, because that was performed outside of the city.
So, and Clay, where were we at with the first bridge project?
So, and a couple months ago, the city council approves kind of an extended agreement with the first bridge. The city's commitment to that was to do some subsurface testing and some geotechnical and some structural engineering. We're in the process of getting that RFP out right now. Our commitment was to have that done before the end of the calendar year, and I believe we're, we're well ahead of meeting that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. So I just wanted to, you know, say that the River Heritage Park has been advocated for by the Riverfront Improvement Commission. It is one of the three parks that we've been developing incrementally over the years on our riverfront, which Riverfront Development and Recreation is very important to the City of Davenport. And with any of the amenities we do, we always go out and find partners to help fund, fund those, whether it be private partners or state partners or federal partners. We, we never go in alone with our own money. And River Heritage is kind of interesting, because since the, the park was created, the east side of Davenport has really kind of, of the downtown has really changed. And there's a lot of people, and it will change more in the, the next few years. There's a lot of more people who are living there, working there, and River Heritage Park is really becoming the neighborhood park for our downtown residents on the, the eastern side. And then we also got the, the news that Viking Cruise Lines is going to dock at River Heritage Park along with American Cruise Lines, who has already been coming here. And we are going to see an incredible number of vessels docking at River Heritage Park starting this year, definitely American Cruise Lines. And then I think Viking comes the year after that. So this is going to be a really cool passive recreation place to come down, see the boats. And if you've ever looked at the Arsenal Bridge from River Heritage Park at about sunset, it's one of the more, more beautiful views on the riverfront. So very excited to see this happen, excited to have the boats docking in Davenport, and like to congratulate the Riverfront Improvement Commission on continuing to push the efforts on improving our riverfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Also, just a reminder that this was one of the parks that was emphatically impacted by the rising of the railroad tracks and delayed, I'm sure, work that might have been done. But I think the result was an access, a park, an access to a park that was sort of dangerous, even though it has, it took more space. even though it has, it took more space, it took some negotiating with the railroad. They wanted to take half the park, you know, for a drive, and we were able to negotiate and, and worked with staff and the task force to Riverfront Development Commission to design a better ingress and egress. So, I really think that's going to enhance the park as well. So, I'm glad to see us moving forward and able to move forward again, because without that finish, it was pretty difficult to do much there. So, again, this is a long-term vision. Yeah, there are, you know, buildings being rehabilitated all along there, new people moving in. There are, you know, there's a neighborhood there that was essentially some empty buildings before, and you'll see more of that, I think. So, I'm excited to see this going forward.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Mayor Mattson. Thank you, Chairman Dunn, for letting me speak. I also want to add a little context and history. Over a decade ago, there was a major discussion on the riverfront of what to do in the middle and then what we call our two bookends, Veterans Memorial Park and Heritage Park. And there was a major discussion what to name both and where to put both. And through the help of the Rotary and many others, and a huge task force that was formed of veterans comprised solely of veterans, the decision was made to make Heritage Park that stand alone, as Alderman Gripp referenced, to entice and to help and to solidify the east. And then the Veterans Task Force, again, led entirely by veterans, went through 26 parks in this city to establish where Veterans Memorial Park, and then they selected down there, and then thus the bookends and the funding and the fundraising and the groups solidified. And I'm so proud to still be here to see that a decade later, both entities are making huge advancements, both the Heritage Park and Veterans Memorial Park. And it's just proud to see over time, sometimes we all know government and work and development, both inside the downtown area where the parks are at Leclerc and our riverfront around Main Street and our different entities. And these two bookends are actually coming to fruition and expanding and growing. And it's just, I just wanted to say I'm so proud to see the, the work that continues and perseverance is the key. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else?
Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion awarding the contract for the purchase of asphalt oils for the 2021 construction season to buy two most materials in supply of Indianapolis, Indiana, in the amount of $2.06, $2.06 a gallon. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Abrams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, how's that price compared to the last couple of years? Can anybody address that?
Nicole Leeson, Public Works. I don't have the exact figures, but my understanding is it's slightly higher, but not, not materially from what we use.
Not 50% higher?
No, no.
And you sure we're going to have enough for all the potholes?
Yes, so actually, I can have you to give a brief pothole update.
Please.
So, right now, we have around 130 open requests. We are working that down to the peak. At the peak, we are around 250 requests. So, in the month of April, or, I'm sorry, in the month of March, we did fill 14,000 potholes in around 1,000 segments of streets in Davenport this month so far. We're around 500 segments, 10,000 potholes, and we are working. Over time, we did this work this past Saturday to get caught up. Now that we have the hot mix, obviously, that big rainstorm did reopen a lot of the cold mix potholes. So, we're kind of catching up again after that big rain. But now that we have the hot mix and these oils, things should be looking up. So, thank you.
Nicole, if they have a chance, can they go over to Vision Street?
Okay, I'll make sure it's on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a motion awarding the blanket contract for geo-electrical materials testing to Terricon Consultants of Bednorf, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 11 is a motion approving the purchase of two storage tanks for calcium chloride from ProTank of Olive Branch, Mississippi, in the amount of $73,946. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? It's just nice to see that we're looking out for winter, and we'll be ready for next year, so thank you. Alderman Dorman, will you set the agenda, please?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The last area for discussion is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District concerning the assignment, duties, and execution of the school resource officer program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Mr. Gosa, state your name and address, please.
I'm Dan Gosa. I live in the Eighth Ward. I am also the president of the Davenport School Board. I wanted to thank you all for your continued partnership. And just to remind you, we've already done the contracts for the SROs. This is just for the MOU. We've talked about it at our board meeting. We are set to vote on it on Monday night on approving it. Our board is on board with this. It's a good partnership between our two entities and look forward to working with you all. And Sarah, I promise I will never, ever make you be the last person at any of our meetings ever again. You proved your point to us. And Superintendent Snakloff would have been here tonight, but he is doing candidate interviews, so he wasn't able to make it, unfortunately. But again, we look forward to working with you all. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I will open it up to council. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Yesterday at our management meeting, I had asked about a couple of changes. And so, I'm asking if those are going to see an amended, I'm assuming not just based on basis of what I'm asking, but are we going to see any amendment to the MOU?
Not based on one specific set of comments. I think based on some of your comments, we can address those through things that we've talked about, that they don't necessitate, from my position, a change to the MOU, especially given that the school board has already started the action. If we want to make a change, as we discussed yesterday, we have to go all the way back to the beginning.
Well, that's a little, I don't mean, I don't mean to create a problem with this, but, you know, this is, you know, we looked at it as a group. It was presented to us. We're not voting, really voting on this until next week. So, it seems, so if the school board is voting on it on Monday, it doesn't seem that we've had a chance to have comment and vet it completely. And I'm a little troubled by that, quite frankly.
Alderman Abrams.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, first off, I can't believe this has taken so long. We want our teachers and students to be in a safe, wholesome environment. And I'm a little concerned about the city council micromanaging the Davenport Public Schools, but we got great police department with great officers. You know, we hope to build up strong relations with young people, and, you know, that's the goal, as far as I'm concerned, with our police department. And it seems like the public school system is pretty happy with where we're going. So, good job.
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I also, as I said last August, I'm very pleased that we're actually working toward an MOU that defines the work of the SROs consistently across the school district. I'd like to read a few remarks, if you please. As I said last August, I'm not for or against SROs in schools, and I've tried, strive to become as informed as I can on this issue, so I can make an informed vote on the MOU between the city of Davenport and the school district. I've talked to city representatives on the task force, Chief Sikorski multiple times, a trained school social worker who works with SROs in a neighboring school district, the president of the NAACP, representatives of various interested organizations, and attended various forums, including that sponsored by the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. I've reviewed the raw data provided by the Davenport Police Department under FOIA request by a local organization and relevant papers and publications. I've spoken with experts in the field. I've reviewed the Iowa State Code, Part 281, Chapter 13, that applies to the school district, and I've also reviewed the, hold on, I have to look up the number, Iowa Code 232.19 and 704.1 that applies to the Davenport Police Department as it relates to SROs, use of force, child custody, and such. In August, last August, I provided detailed questions and issues I requested the task force to consider, and I subsequently provided detailed comments on the draft MOU at the joint special session, several of which were incorporated into the MOU, including defining the term of the NOU in Section 7 and attempting to define that SROs are not intended to fulfill disciplinarian roles due to the school administration and the staff in Section 6G. You can see that I take this vote, my responsibility as elected official, very seriously. I appreciate the work of the task force on defining the work of the SROs in the school district so as to provide consistent and effective service to the district administration and staff, the school board, and, most importantly, the students. I highly respect Chief Sikorski and Lieutenant Smith, and I know they're committed to the purposes of the SRO program in supporting the school district. I believe that the framework within which the SRO program should operate is to provide support as needed to and required by the district administration and staff and school board, to provide a safe educational environment for students and staff, relevant training to staff and education to students, and positive role models for students. Most importantly, the SRO program must not further contribute to the disproportionality issue identified the state, which the Davenport Community School District is attempting to address. This program must also keep in mind that the students they work with every day are children. In the process of developing their personalities, their perceptions, their social skills, their maturity, their intelligence in learning, all within the challenges of hormonal changes, brain growth and development, learning to cope with stresses and circumstances, having few tested emotional and psychological skills, and often experiencing home and/or social challenges. Every interaction of an SRO with a student must always involve attempting to understand underlying issues to the presenting behavioral responses, practicing de-escalation, de-escalating high emotions and difficult behavior, choosing the path of least force, and knowing when to step back in favor of trained school staff and referrals to non-enforcement professionals. All of this is a very difficult task. I believe, in many ways, the MOU does not sufficiently define the roles and responsibilities of the SROs in relation to district administration and staff. So, in my discussion with Chief Sikorski and Lieutenant Smith, I learned that the school district and the SRO liaison and officers have state regulations that they must follow. The school district is Chapter 103, and I learned this afternoon that the police department follows a different set of code, state code, at 232.19 involving taking a child into custody, which also involves when they can use things, physical restraints like handcuffs, and 704.1 defining the use of reasonable force. I discovered that these two sets of regulations are very, very different in scope and practice. I did ask that we be provided these regulations as well as the policies of the Davenport Police Department, so that we would understand the background in terms of the actions of school department as well as police department staff. This was not provided in the frequently asked questions that was subsequently, subsequently provided to us on April 9th. Although I deeply trust that Chief Sikorski and Lieutenant Smith have the highest skills and intention, it's highly probable that neither will be in their same positions within the entire 10-year term of this MOU. So, we have to address the details of positions and roles, which is the purpose of the MOU. I have asked Chief Sikorski some questions, and Lieutenant Smith has responded to those, and I'm going to give them a chance later to, when I finish these remarks, to actually provide their information. I agree with Alderwoman McGinnis. I believe that words incorporated into an MOU must be specific and concise in order to ensure consistency, agreement, and certainty among the assignees. I, we did not receive a copy of the MOU that went through the Committee of the Whole for the school board until after that meeting. I requested it. I found it on the school board website, and then subsequently to my asking for it, it was then sent to all of us. So, we really didn't have a chance. We knew that there were changes, but we really didn't have a chance to review those changes until after it had gone through the school board at the Committee of the Whole. I also request a substantive change to the sentence in Section 6G of the MOU, which I'm glad it was added afterwards, but I have a problem with some of the wording. The sentence is read, "Behavioral issues inside the classroom will remain the responsibility of district staff and personnel." I request that the words "inside the classroom" be changed to "on school grounds." I believe the intent is to keep disciplinary action solely within the purview of school administration and staff in any location under the authority of the Davenport Community School District to which the SROs are assigned. I believe that this change is sufficiently important to request that the decision on the MOU either be dealt with between now and the, the next meeting, or that we table it for a short period of time until this change can be incorporated and approved by the school board, and I will request this next week. I have talked to President Gosa about that. I'm not saying that he agreed or disagreed, but I did talk to him about my concern with the sentence. I also agree with Alderman McGinnis's comment yesterday that the sentence needs to be its own subsection in Section 6, as it is a critical distinction defining the roles and activities of the SRO compared to school district personnel roles regarding discipline versus law enforcement. The MOU in Sections 4, 5, and 7, and further clarified in the frequently asked questions, requires individual SRO and program-level evaluations conducted by the mayor, school board president, and administrative staff liaisons from the city and school district every February, with the results available to the city council, the school board, and unidentified, quote, "applicable community organizations," unquote. The MOU also provides for an annual SRO student and staff survey. The purpose of the surveys is to, quote, "review the program, including stakeholder feedback, and explore any changes that may be advisable." According to Director Merritt, the SRO program currently costs multiple entities over $600,000 per year in SRO officer salaries and benefits, and again, should not in any way contribute to the district's disproportionality issues and should actively contribute to correcting these issues. These annual and open individual and program evaluations are critical to determining the effectiveness of the SRO program and should be considered in light of district budgetary needs for social workers, counselors, and other student support. City staff have assured me that any SROs no longer in the program will remain on the Davenport Police Force. These evaluations clearly laid out in the MOU does provide a foundation for my support for this MOU, but I want to reiterate that I really believe the wording of the section, the sentence in 6G needs to be changed to cover the entire school grounds. Can I ask a representative of the police department to come up for a moment to address the questions that I sent to them last night? And I'll just, just briefly summarize, and you can, your answers? Is that okay? Yes. Thank you. So, my question, and does the Part 281, Chapter 103 of the state code, it clearly applies to employees of public schools and area education agencies regarding applying physical contact or force to control students? Does this also apply to the Davenport Police Department?
Yeah, I think one thing that's important to remember is even though our officers are working inside the school, that they're still Davenport city employees. They work for the police department. So, we actually, they work under a different set of laws and ordinances and general orders.
Okay, and that's that. Okay, and that's that 232.19 and 704.1 relating to taking child into custody and use of reasonable force?
That's correct.
Yeah, and it's, again, it's much different in scope and practice than what applies to city employees, um, uh, the council employees. The school employees, thank you. Okay, number two. Please explain how an SRO determines whether a certain verbally or physically aggressive behavior by a child needs de-escalation procedures by school staff, disciplinary action by school staff, referral to school or mental health staff, or when a situation requires juvenile-specific and juvenile-appropriate policing by the SROs, including physical restraints, chemical irritants, and reasonable force.
Would you like me to just respond to the answer that I wrote in here?
Yeah, oh, you can, sure.
Um, as stated in the MOU, behavioral issues inside the classroom will remain the responsibility of the district personnel and staff. That's the 6G that you were referencing earlier. SRO intervention into a situation, if criminal, comes only after all district policies and procedures have been exhausted and at the request of staff. SROs receive regular training on proper use of force, bias training, mental health, and participate in all training provided by the district as well. And I would also add that use of force, as far as chemical restraints, we ran the, um, the FOIA request that you referenced earlier. There was one use of pepper spray and one taser in all of the uses of force, I think in the last five years at those eight schools.
Okay, thank you. The MOU requires training for each SRO through the National Association of School Resource Officers. Does each SRO attend at least the five-day basic SRO course prior to being assigned to a school, which provides certification by the International Association of Directors of Law Enforcement Standards and Training? Go ahead.
Yeah. The short answer is yes. Every, every single one of our officers minus Sergeant Quick is trained through NASRO, the National Association of School Resource Officers. Uh, there needs to be a distinction made. They're not actually certified through NASRO. They don't offer certification, but you are trained. You get a certi- a certificate, certificate of completion. So we try to make that possible, that officers are all trained before we place them in the school. However, there's, you know, there's things that are out of our control when the classes are offered, when they, when they, when they're onboarded, when they're assigned to the schools. COVID definitely played a role in trying to get Sergeant Quick there, so, um, that's the goal. Is it always possible? No.
Okay, thank you. Since an SRO needs specific skills for working with students who are still developmentally immature and may be undergoing challenges with socialization, home environment, physiological hormonal changes, or disabilities that can result in frustration or aggressive behaviors compared to what you generally do with routine law enforcement activities. How is the standard Davenport Police Department evaluation identified in Section 4 of the MOU adapted to be effective for evaluating SROs working with children rather than adults?
Yeah, I think this was one area that we really wanted to emphasize. We really wanted to get input from our, our building principals that are working with our officers in the school every day. So as part of the MOU, we wrote in, um, the understanding that the officer in charge, it's me, would meet with the principals twice a year to get their input, to make sure that the officers are doing just what you're talking about right, right in here. And I think it's important to remember, too, that our police officers are, um, this, this doesn't just happen inside the school. I mean, our police officers are dealing with juveniles with the same problems outside of school, um, and they handle those situations well, both inside and outside of the school district. So, um, they're receiving training, um, not only with the Police Department yearly and in-service training, but they get that training now through the district as well.
Okay, thank you. In an explanatory document prepared and disseminated by the Davenport Police Department regarding SROs, and it was undated, it states that SROs and school liaison officers are responsible for investigating school truancy. How do SROs address truancy issues or work with school staff and social workers so as not to criminalize students who might be missing school due to family issues or other challenges in their lives?
Yeah, this is definitely a common misunderstanding of truancy. So, uh, yes, students can be truant. Students can be truant from school, but it is, when we write truant tickets, it's not the responsibility of the student, it's the responsibility of the parents. So the parents get cited for truancy. The district has a lengthy process that lays out all of the intervention steps that they take to make sure that the students get back into school, because ultimately that is the goal. And then with the help of the county attorney's office, they give us permission then to cite the ticket. So the school resource officers are basically just facilitating that process. Once the, uh, the county attorney's office says, uh, yes, the district has, or the school, the particular school has fulfilled all of those, um, parameters set forth in the law, we just write the ticket. That's what we do, and then we go testify to, um, the fact that all of that was, was completed by the school district. So, um, students aren't criminalized. The parents get the ticket, and this is, it's a simple misdemeanor ticket. It's like, like a speeding ticket, equivalent to a speeding ticket.
Are there ever referrals to social workers to find out why the student isn't in school?
Um, there is, and, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure the, um, the district could speak probably better about that than, than I. Um, I know that there's an initial outreach to the parents. Some of the interventions include actual home visits. They're offered different types of services to get them there. I think there, it's a four or five-step process before it's, it's referred to us.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, and now, this question was before I understood that you operated under a different set of state code than school personnel, okay? So under the school personnel one, it requires that physical restraint be used only after use of positive behavior interventions and supports, alternative disciplinary actions, this is words from the code, crisis prevention and interventions, and crisis de-escalation techniques. That physical restraints be reasonable and necessary in duration. According to information released by the Davenport Police Department per FOIA, SROs do not document the use of physical restraints such as handcuffs, as they are considered u- not, not considered use of force. Please explain why physical constraints are not considered use in force and therefore not documented, while the use of hand control is considered a use of force and documented?
Yeah, I think that question originated from, um, the original FOIA request from, uh, what's the interface that asked for. So handcuffs are not considered a use of force under our policy. Handcuffs alone do not, do not constitute a use of force. For example, um, when, uh, when a person is arrested and transported to jail, in order to enter the jail, a person has to be in handcuffs. So there may not be an actual use of force. We may just handcuff that person and then transport them to jail per their policy, and there was never a use of force. In the schools, it's going to be a little bit different. I, I would rarely, I, I can hardly think of a, of an incident where a student would be put in handcuffs that wouldn't, um, wouldn't coincide with the use of force. Um, a use of force would go with that, and it would be documented. To say that, to say that, um, a student that is handcuffed inside the school isn't documented, is not true. Anytime a student would be handcuffed in the school, there would be an, an incident and a police report that went along with that, and that police report will be part of that monthly report that's provided to the city and the school district as part of this MOU. So, um, use of force incidents, handcuffing, um, reports, all of that will be part of that, that monthly report.
Okay. Is there anything that I haven't asked that you think I should have asked?
Uh, I want to say no, ma'am.
Thank you very, very much for clarifying some of those points. Again, I am concerned about, um, all of this just being within the classroom, and I really do request that the words be changed to "on school grounds" for that MOU. And again, we did not receive a copy of the MOU until after it had gone through the school, the school board. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you, I'm finally done.
Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the Alstart, I want everybody to know I'm highly critical of this program. I'll say again, I'm highly critical of this program. And before I continue to ask questions, I just want to give higher-arching questions. That way, we can all have the same baseline. And can somebody from staff tell me, is there a particular date that this MOU must be approved by the council?
No, staff brought this forward consistent with council direction.
Okay, so if my memory serves me correctly, I was going back and writing notes, and, and please, if I remember correctly, the city council wanted to organize a task force or a, and they came up, they, they formed, and once that MOU, as they did, was established, is called back to the council for approval. Now, so, let me key in something other than, I've been doing some research, and people have been talking a lot of stuff. So I've been watching the school board meetings, and I saw the one where the, uh, our team was there listening, so was Sarah Ott was there as well. It seems as though we are in a rush to push this thing through, and as you can clearly hear from all the, all the persons, this is clearly not, clearly flushed out. And I'm talking about process here, clearly on process. And as I sit back and I listen, and I listened to the school board meeting, they said, well, and they've talked about everything is not a perfect process, there's no perfect agreement. Well, we have time, according to the city manager. We have time. Why not negotiate those final points? Let's flush those things out, because at the end of the day, we're talking about children. Children, and one of my colleagues talked about micromanaging, but my other colleague a year ago, well, I wasn't here a year ago, a couple months ago, said we have a client, a client, uh, service agreement or partnership. We can't have, we can't have it both ways. Either we have a partnership where we are partners with the school board, and which we have an MOU. I understand what they're doing. They have a timeline, and so do we. I think we have an honest to the people that we represent to really flush this thing out. As you clearly heard, the questions from, uh, my colleagues to my left, there are some, there are some questions that need to be clearly answered. And I'm talking about process for us again, and where do we go from here? Do we continue to, once again, once again, as I always say, kick that can down a roll? We'll worry about that when we get there. Somebody who's sitting there will say, well, everything's not perfect. Well, we have the opportunity to do it right now. We have the opportunity. Let's do it. There's no rush right now. Just because the school board is voting on it doesn't mean we need to go back and do it right now. I'm highly critical on how we are proceeding right now. So now to my linear questions, if we got that out. As I looked over the MOU, and once again, I'm highly critical on how we are proceeding. Let me make sure we're, I'm clear on that. In the MOU, it says that it would provide police ser- hopefully I get the right section. Police services, and as, I hope I get your name right. Please excuse me if I didn't get your last name. Lieutenant Smith, right? And as, as he said at the city, at the school board meeting, as well as today, I can't help but find and gather more questions. It seems as though, you know, answering Alderman, Alderman's lead questions, you know, it's too ambiguous there. Nothing has been defined, and that's the problem that I had. There was a task force. It was supposed to flush those things out. And then there was a meeting of the city council and the school board. I was there virtually. Somebody said I wasn't there. I was there virtually. And there's nothing was there. You know what? She said the MOU wasn't even there for the city council members. So what are we doing? So I think at the end of the day, I think we should, we ought to take a pause. I, I know he's the chair, but I'm asking that the city council do what's right, maybe for once in a while, let's do this thing right, because this is really important, particularly to me, because everybody know champion children and, and make, and this really agitates me. It really does. And I, I sat back and I listened to the questions from Alderman Lee. I hear the hesitation Alderman McGinnis, and it's clearly process, flush those things out, and having a task force. I don't know how, I don't know what we do from now. You know, do we go back? That's a question for you guys. I understand the, the minutia of trying to work these things out with the school board, but we're, we're professionals, and at the end of the day, we're here to make sure that we provide a great service for our, for our children. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Alderman Jogen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions to start off with, and I think President Gosa kind of hit on this, but we kind of lost this. Could someone answer, so if the MOU does not get approved by the city council, will there still be school resource officers in the designated schools in the city of Davenport?
Yes.
Okay, so again, whether we ultimately approve this or not, we still have, there's still a, something in place and going from there. One of my other questions that I've asked before and was brought up was the disproportionality comment. Is the MOU and the program, and maybe this is for Dr. Klipser, President Gosa, does the MOU, um, is this in alignment with what the school district is having to go through with the state currently? You know, state is, and the school, school district is having to, you know, address issues, you know, budgetary, you know, disproportionality. I'm just curious, does the MOU in its current form, is it in alignment with what you're already having to do, or are we getting kind of the cart before the horse? Am I asking the right question there? I apologize.
Could you try that one more time for me?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, does it, does this MOU, and I worded it better when, uh, when we were together the other day, and I, I'm flubbing on now. Does the MOU contradict any work that's being done currently with the state to address disproportionality within the Davenport School District?
As we look at our disproportionality in the district, we're looking at that as a systems-level concern. We have to look at disproportionality in all areas, and so the, the quick response is that if there's disproportionality within the SRO system, we need to be looking at our whole system as opposed to just one, one aspect of the SRO. So, um, in short, this, the MOU does not contradict the issue of disproportionality, but in looking at the data, which we hope to collect through the survey, through the monthly reports, um, we will be able to review that and address those through interventions and changes in what we do, but it, it won't contradict our work with this.
And then to follow up on that, is this something that has to be vetted by the state? I mean, has, has the school district presented this to the state saying, hey, here's something we're doing. We're going into a partnership with the city of Davenport to provide, for the city of Davenport to provide resource officers in our schools at the school district's request. Here's, here's what we're working on. Give us a thumbs up, thumbs down. Is that something that's been done?
Yeah, I, I can't speak to conversations specifically with our state partners. I'm not in the room for those pieces. What I can tell you is that at the, uh, at the collaborative meeting between council and our school board, that many of you were at, at our, at our district office, our state-level officials were listening into that conversation and provided feedback. I know there was, um, some concern about the, the 10-year span of that, and they wanted to have a more of a consistent annual renewal in review of the data, and so they are aware of where we're going, and that's really a district-level issue that our superintendent is in communication with them about also.
Awesome, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't have any more questions. I have a couple, couple of comments, though. Thanks, Dr. Klipser. My angle from this is just coming in as someone that, you know, I want to be supportive of our Davenport Police Department, and I feel that as this discussion gets brought up, yes, our priority has to be to protect children, to create a great environment within our school district, but I think what gets lost is, a lot of times, it seems like the villagers are coming at our police department with pitchforks and torches and all this, like, like, like we're imposing something, you know, upon our school district. You know, I view this as something that the school district is requesting as a service from us. I want an MOU, I want- I want an MOU, I want policies and procedures that protect our officers, because I think if we do that, then we will also create a very safe, an educational environment within our school district. We're just coming together, there's a synergy there. For me, the devil has been in the details a little bit. You know, I've had some conversations and some of my angst has come from the fact that an MOU kind of seen as an outline doesn't get to the policies and procedures that maybe will be developed to allow this to carry on. And I've had to kind of wrap my brain around the fact that, yes, this is just a memorandum of understanding. This is not the school district policy and procedural manual for how an SRO is going to behave in and out of this, in and out of the school setting each and every day. And so I've, I've kind of let go of some of that. And hopefully as we continue to further our conversation, you know, we'll be able to learn about the great things that the school district is planning. You know, the different procedures that will take place. So again, we can provide a safe learning environment for our students. So our officers can be properly trained, so they can excel in the work that they're going to do within our schools and that we can have a nice harmonious relationship. And so, going forth, I, or kind of go on one step more. You know, I do think the process that's been talked about has kind of got a little wonky here. It does seem like, you know, at parts, the cart does get a little bit before the horse. You know, I don't know if that's, you know, unintentional, intentional, or whatnot. You know, if we do have an ability to, you know, pause, I would always be for something of that nature. I don't want to stop progress. But again, my, my take on this is, not only do I want to see a safe environment in schools, but I want to be protective of our officers so that they're not being put in a bad position where they're under attack for every, every little thing they do. And so with that ramble, I am done, thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is government at its best. We've been talking about this for a year, and we just go to, we sit and listen to Alderman. It's like they haven't been part of it, they continue to ask questions. I think it's a great relationship. I strongly disagree with Alderman Lee. So, my recommendation would be, you know, majority rules, we vote, if you don't like it, vote against it. But, you know, some people will never be satisfied. And I apologize to the Davenport voting schools for what they're participating in tonight.
Alderman Dorment.
Thank you, Alderman Condon, and I might shoot this question right here back to you or Mayor Mattson. But I, I feel like one of the items we maybe have missed on so far tonight is just how we got here and the in-depth review that you guys have done in partnerships with the school board and all the other meetings and people you have talked to in order to get, get to the point where we are today. I think, I don't want to necessarily lose sight of everything that you've done in order to create this, this document that is also a partnership document with the school board.
So you're asking me, you know, if you'll let me speak?
Either Alderman Condon or Mayor Mattson, I know you both were.
I was gonna, I asked Alderman Condon if I could speak at the end, but if you want a direct question now, I can give you the history. I think, I tried to keep, not in full detail certainly, but you guys informed. We started this process quite a while ago. Many months ago, there was a lot of discussion about the SRO. Let's please remember, there was no program before we put the task force and the process together. The SROs, the police, were in our schools based on a request of the school district. Through many years ago, there, by my account, there was a request to have more officers in our schools, especially at the lower levels, because of the need. Councils that I was on okayed that. Because of the trust that we had with our police department, with our leaders in our schools, and I thank so much Dan Gosa, Dr. Klipsh, T.J. Schneklaw, and many others, Linda Hayes, who have been part of this process, our city staff, Ms. Spiegel, Ms. Ott, of course, the two gentlemen in the back with badges on, Lieutenant Smith and Chief Sukorski, and many others, through huge amounts of discussion, taking serious what community members have said. Then we, you know, formed the, I formed the task force to gather a partnership through the school district and the police department, and our leaders in the schools, and our staff, with the assistance of my friend to the right, Alderman Condon, took the MLU to many people. Larry Robertson, the president of NAACP, was part of many of our meetings. Jasmine Newton was part of many of our meetings, the president of LULAC. Huge amounts of folks from the school district who don't look like me reviewed and edited and went over the MOU. Huge amounts of people did this. Going through the discussions on each point, there were, there were evaluations by the police department, but not a formal evaluation process done by, for an SRO in cooperation with the school district. The process has been extensive. Not perfect, I don't know that any MOU that we've done, and I've been on this council a long time, certainly some people in this room, Dale, maybe you've been here, Rick Dunn, who's sat in these meetings longer than maybe me, or Alderman Ambrose. There's not a bigger discussion, more in-depth discussion, more bigger pro-, in-depth process for any MOU we've ever done in this city. So we continued to work and address and talk to principals, parents, individuals, folks in the schools who, who deal with interventions, administrators separately and in cooperation and comprehensively in groups. Both the school folks did that, to Dr. Klipsh's credit. The police did it, we did it, to take each phase that we heard from the public and try and address them with the understanding not to specifically micromanage every little word and sentence, so that we trust our leaders. I mean, quite frankly, folks, if you want to be on the school board, go run for their jobs. We, we did this in a comprehensive, collective, intensive discussion. Then we came up with a timeframe to, in agreement with the school folks and us, to get together in a collaborative big room, i.e., thank you the hosts of our schools, to do that, so that everybody can ask their questions and then we can see what is going on. And then people provided input, and we went back and reexamined every phase again to do that. Especially talking about relationships that our police had. As I've talked about many times, many people push us to force relationship with our police and our youth. This is, this is one of the best, and I think you know my history. Eighteen years in a public school here, every day, understanding and seeing what, what, what these guys, meaning the folks in the back in badges, our police, does and does not do, and work to solidify and have a comprehensive, unified program instead of a, this principal does this, this principal does this, this principal does this, et cetera. And the working relationship and understanding that both the school, the police, the people that are involved on a task force, and many others in the community, coming together with really one sole goal, to make this a program that we can provide information, because one of the big things we saw, we need to be transparent. I can't think of another thing that's more transparent than this. Every month, we're going to provide data, meaning they are. I'll point to Lieutenant Smith, but, okay. To everyone, everyone. You heard Mr. Guster's comments at the joint meeting? Happy to have that, Jasmine Newton, happy to have that. We're committed to that. If you don't, I, I challenge, why would you think we're not? That's, I have a concern if you don't think we're doing, gonna do that. That you think we're just making this stuff up, that the task force just pulled stuff out and decided to not discuss something, not do something, at the same time trusting our leaders in our schools and our police to do the right thing and do these. They have, they will. We've committed to transparency, we've committed to evaluations, we've committed to a, a program that's, that's comprehensive and unified, committed to, to taking feedback from tons of different folks. I mean, I personally want to, more than 20 individuals not looking like me that work with youth, both in the school and out, and say, write up the heck out of this thing and give me your feedback. Every one but one said the best thing I've ever seen. Every one but one. So here we are, in cooperation with our school folks, after the comprehensive meeting that we had at the school district, going back and taking some feedback, no disrespect to anybody, but I don't get everything I want in every word and every sentence all the time. I don't think anybody in this room ever will, wherever does or in your life. But we try to make it a piece of paper, a program, an individual working document with amendments, addendum, sorry, that gives guidance to our police, our school, our city, our parents, everyone. And they understand that there's an evaluation, there's a review, there's transparency. All of that, and we're committed to do that. I asked the city council to please support this. Questions are good, but questions that are concerning that the police don't know what they're doing, the school board doesn't know what they're doing, teachers don't know what they're doing, I mean, I've seen these guys at work every day. I've, to say we care about children, there's nobody that cares about children more than teachers. And we're doing that every day, and the teachers had impact, input to this also. We certainly care about children. That's why we heard from people that we should form a group to work on this, to make it an example. I just simply, so that's a lot more, I apologize, Alderman Dorment and Alderman Condon to you as the chair, than probably what you asked. But huge amounts of meetings, huge amounts of discussions, huge amounts to reaching out to people, huge amounts to getting feedback. And I'm concerned that people don't think that was done. And also, police trust, I ask you, you can, not if you want, but to think that had, that some of this stuff hasn't been done. And it's the school's responsibility to manage school, manage school business. That's theirs, not ours. Their business, police business to manage police business, not ours. We set policy, we override the policy, we, we set a policy and overview and, and say, please. But we discussed it in detail. Thank you, Superintendent, for coming. Just again, since I've been talking, thank you very much for the work that we've done with you in cooperation to make this program good. And it's a constant evaluation. We're committed to that also. But don't hold, please, I asked, don't hold it up. Because we, we, we have something here that's never been done before. We have something here that takes this process and puts it in a place that the people can see via data, because that's what they wanted, via transparency, from organizations like school leaders, police, and city council, and elected folks, all in comprehensive working together to do this. Where else has that been done? We're setting the standard for that, no, it's not perfect. Yes, we can realign and re-put, but one word here, one word here, yeah, okay, we could do that. And at the end of the day, if someone wants to make an amendment request, there's a motion, you can make an amendment motion, somebody can second it and we can vote on amendment. And then, we, at the end of the day, next week, we can make, you can make any motion you want, and we can see where the vote goes. But the work that's been done by the folks as part of this, ladies and gentlemen, I've been here a long time. This is, this is pretty serious and, and pretty intensive and pretty comprehensive. And I thank everybody for the question, I thank everybody for their interest. And, and it doesn't stop from here, we're going to continue to do that, so I apologize that I maybe went over, but I thank you for allowing me to, you know, I'm happy to answer any other questions if people have.
No, I, I appreciate that, Mayor Mattson. I think that was the real highlight that I wanted to get at, that Mayor said, is that it was a in-depth process that we went through that had many, many players at the table with many, many different meetings. It, it wasn't something where maybe we, we just put this together in a couple of days and now here we are voting on it. It was a true partnership that took time, that had given takes from everyone, heard everyone's inputs. And, and like Mayor said, it might not be perfect, but it's, if we're not debating a few words, I was trying to think of an analogy of how, almost in my kind of thought, disrespectful this is to the school board of how, what if it was the other way? And the one I thought of that might not connect as well, because it's not as emotional as children's safety or the policing topics might be right now. But it was if, what if our Parks and Rec program wanted to offer a, a new basketball service and we needed gyms in order to do it? So we went to the school board and said, hey, you have gyms and PE teachers, and we would like to have an, an understanding with you guys that we'll offer the programs, we'll run the programs, but we need your buildings and your teachers in order to do it. And so we all got together, we talked about the rules, we debated whether we're going to have an NBA three-point line or whether we're going to have a shot clock or not. And we all came together and, and came up with our own set of rules that we both parties wanted to work by. And we even said, well, here are our goals of the program, because it, it's coming through our Parks and Rec program. So we kind of want to have the drive and leadership for it. You guys just have the, the space needed and, and the people in order to put it on for us. And so it, it then comes to us, we all say, yes, we agree, we don't have a problem. And we, we're now in the school board setting. And they started, in the middle of their meeting, saying stuff like, well, we want to work on fundamentals, so we aren't even going to have a three-point line. And the state of Iowa Boys Union doesn't use a shot clock, so let's get rid of the shot clock. And they started changing things that we all agreed upon as part of our program after all the hard work we, we put into it. To me, that, that seems out of line for us, because I, I see this as a school board need and want and a partnership that we have made with them, so that both sides can be happy to offer the services that we have that in this case are, is our police force. And so hearing everything that went into creating this document and knowing that our school board is on board and that our school district is on board, I have to support it as is, and like the mayor also said, we can continue to work on any small tweaks or changes we might want to have here in the near future. So with that, I appreciate the time and I'll turn it back over.
Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. I want to make sure that everybody understands where my comments came from. I support the schools, I support our police, I support the SROs. I'm disappointed, simply, and I'll just state it, that I didn't understand the timing. And I'm disappointed that something disimportant, yes, I participated in the meeting, that we had, you know, basically last Friday when we got this from our staff. So I'm disappointed in that. I appreciate all the very hard work that the task force has done and the time that it's taken. It is extremely important. And I hope with something, I had hoped with something this important that we might have had another chance to look at it. Simply that is all I'm saying tonight. So maybe in the future, if it's something this important again, we can have a little more time. I, you know, I think it's a good program. I think, again, everybody has worked very hard together and I support this. But at the end of the day, we come back, you come back to us for our approval for this. And I don't think that people's comments, I've heard, it feels a little bit like people's comments are being attacked a little bit, and I don't think that's really appropriate. I think there, if there's not time for a review, then there are time for comments. So I, I do support, you know, always the opportunity for people to come back and have questions. And we do this every week at council. So again, would have been nice to have had a little more time with the document, thank you.
Alderman Peacock.
Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me a second crack at this thing, because, you know, I'm sorry, you know, people have made comments, so I'd like to offer some further conversations, if you will. You know, I have a pretty good memory, everybody talk about transparency, I remember Alderman Lee sitting at that chair to my front left, asking at least twice about the status, about the SRO. If I'm not mistaken, not to put words in people's mouth, they're working on it, and we'll get something when it comes out. That was, I remember it, because I was like, man, I want to know about what's going on. So now, fast forward, we use this word transparency, and I'm highly critical of that word, transparency. The mayor used the word working document, working document. That tells me that it's not a finished document, it's a moving target, so there's no rush for the city council to vote on this thing, because there are clearly things that need to be discussed, and we're not talking about a word or two. When you talk about, well, the, and let me, let me preface this whole thing, because I know people are going to say, "Well, he's critical of the program because of X, Y, and Z." Let me be very clear, I am, there's no one probably in council more supportive of the police department. The police chief knows that, someone who has served faithfully to my country, I know what they're going through. But a colleague sat here no more than 20 minutes ago and said, "The concern for police safety." But we're talking about the MRO of the school board as relation to schools, so let's not change the narrative. We're talking about the MRO, how the SROs are going to interact in the school district. We're not talking about police safety. There's two different things, we're not going to change the narrative now. The task force, somebody, another colleague mentioned how it's disrespectful, but this is the process, this is what we voted on to do. The task force will go and do their thing, and the city council will vote on it. Now, if you're not getting the, if a certain, all the person didn't get their answers, their questions answered in an appropriate time, this is the forum, and that person should not be attacked for that, because those questions need to be answered to have a, an informed decision to force that person to come vote. Once again, this is not an attack on the school district. I have a lot of friends who work at the school board, this is not an attack on police, we're talking about, once again, process, how you come before the city council, and how my colleagues may, I don't know if they want to walk it back, but I'm not going to, I said what I said. You cannot come and ask the city council to go vote on something that we just got. Now, if this was anything else, I can hear my colleagues now, "Well, you got to go through the cycle." Well, we didn't have enough time. I've heard that a thousand times since I've been here. Well, I didn't get enough detail. I heard that a thousand times. Well, what about this, what about that? And my question is, why are we not doing the same thing with this SRO, MRO, as our school resource also, memorandum of understanding? Keep that same energy you did all these other programs that you were skeptical of, what about this program? I hope my colleagues would keep in mind who's, at the end of the day, who's the client, and who they're representing, because that's what a colleague call it, the client serves agreement. At the end of the day, we provide the service for the children of the Davenport schools. And to push this thing through, or not to really have a time to have discussions, and we just think, as a council, not as a task force, then shame on all of us, because we're not doing that job. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I'd like to add a couple of remarks. Dr. Snackloff, did I ever tell you about the time I met Walter Mondale? The tension in the room is high, and I wanted to try to cast this in a positive light, if I, if I can, and I hope my remarks land. I had the opportunity to serve as the council liaison, I suppose, to the task force, and just to very generally summarize my experience was, we addressed, coming in, or recognized coming in, that we weren't really measuring what we were doing, there wasn't data there, and we wanted to, and we needed to start collecting it. There were concerns that were brought to us by the public from the get-go, and we took those concerns, and we tried to build in some parameters within the MOU, but the broad takeaway was that we needed to start measuring things so that we know where we stand, whether you're for or against the presence of SROs in our schools, and get that data, and so we can react to it. So I just want the public to know who is speaking, I'm an elected official, and we live in interesting times, and you kind of want to know where people align, so I just want to throw out there that Black Lives Matter, and I was out there at the protests, and, and, and I believe in police reform. That's, that's who I, how I approach this. We live in a time of social progress in our country, and progress is painful, because you have to look inward and, and see where you're at, and as a country, we're reckoning with our history of race in America and policing in America, so it's hard not to approach this topic or this item without that background. But Davenport as a city doesn't dismiss those concerns or shy away from those conversations, and while it feels awkward to congratulate ourselves on any progress, when it's clear that as a nation we have so far to go, I believe that this is a great thing that we've done. I believe Davenport is ahead of the curve in so many ways in police reform. So many of the items that are brought to us by people seeking reform, we're able to point out that we're actually already doing that. It's a long list of things that we're always, already doing, and it's probably a long list of things that we need to continue to do, but we're trying. And if you don't know a police officer, I encourage you to get to know them. I'm always impressed with how empathetic they are. It's one of their greatest strengths, and I don't think we just get lucky when we hire, I think that comes from a culture, that, that these guys are, they offer me some of the best perspective that I can get when, when I'm trying to appreciate what it's like to be someone living among the marginalized in our community. So I don't want this cloud to hang over this good thing that we're doing today. Don't mistake a community's willingness to have a hard conversation about race and policing in America as a weakness, it's actually a great strength, and, you know, I'm most skeptical of an organization that doesn't want to admit any struggles with prejudice, and I trust the ones that are most willing to bring all of that out into the daylight and have these difficult conversations. So I guess I won't congratulate us for doing this, but I will congratulate the public, because as I've said many times, we're having a national conversation about policing in America, we're having a national conversation about race in America, and this task force was born out of the same people who were out there last year protesting, coming to the council, saying that this is something that they were concerned about, and, and we've responded, and the story, and the takeaway from this should not be anything other than another flawed city in America takes a small step towards getting better, because that's what we're trying to do here. And this MOU gives us the opportunity to put the information in the sunlight and continue to get better. Below this, we have purchases, are we good there?
You have no more comments?
Yeah, so below this, we have purchases from 10,000 to 50,000, we don't read each of those out loud. I'll leave that to you, Alderman Peacock. So purchases from 10,000 to 50,000, we don't read each of those aloud, but they are listed here for your information, and Alderman Peacock, I'll invite you to set the agenda.
I move to place this item on, I move to place this item on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that concludes finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. The next item, is there any other ordinances, motions or resolutions? There are none tonight. The next item, is there any public with business? So if you are a public and would like to talk to council, please come to the podium, mic's above you, please give your name, address, or ward. If you're not from here, we'd love to hear where you're from, and you'll have five minutes, please. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Willie Shorter. Been complaining about something that's been going on for so long, and there's nothing being done.
Mr. Shorter, please give your address, or ward.
So I took it on my own to make a documentary in the state of Davenport, Iowa, about racism in Iowa. It's a process of a book that I'm writing, but I took it on to interview people in my building about racism. And as far as this about the schools, if you ain't not going to put no metal detectors in, then you're not talking about nothing, okay? So basically what I'm trying to say here, we have four, we have five Floyds that was killed here years ago. So I'm doing this documentary on racism, on why they died and how they died. And from my knowledge, from what the people telling me that I'm interviewing every day with my camera, police did this. So how is you guys going to understand to stop this racism just going on when we still fighting it in my building? So, you know, I haven't been here because I've been doing this documentary and writing this book, so I have two people I have to call in reinforcements, this is professionals that's from Central High School, and you all know him very well. He was a student, and he graduated, and he went on to Pro Bowl. So he, he donated cameras and everything to help me with this documentary, because this is something that needs to be told. Davenport, Iowa has a secret, and this secret needs to come out. If y'all want to stop racism, then you need to hear this secret. So when I post this on YouTube, a just documentary on racism in Iowa, then you will understand what I'm talking about and how I'm feeling behind this podium today, because no one is contacting me, no one is reaching out, I don't even trust our NAACP, because they don't even call me, I have to call them. So basically, y'all just want me to go away, and then we have the Mr. Reporter guy that wants to know if I filed with the Civil Rights. Well, I did file with the Civil Rights, and they are helping me. But it was sad that I had to call in some famous people to help me that went to my school to help me with my, with my journey here. You know what I'm saying? So basically what I'm trying to say here is, I'm making a video, I just talked to the chief of police, he's new, you knew, all the cricket mayors, and all the cricket governors that we had over the years, y'all have a chance to make it right. And right now, I'm not seeing that. So therefore, when this, when this video comes out, when this documentary comes out about how racism is in Iowa, it's going to blow your mind, because their parents still want to know why their sons are gone. They still want to know, and they were very strong men, so I know they wouldn't have killed themselves there. So I'm bringing this documentary out, and people are stepping up and helping me make this video in my community. So you don't have to help me, because nobody's not helping me, no one's not calling me, we're still being called the N-word. There was a Mexican lady that got, got pushed, got called a wetback, all this is going on in my building, and no one is still coming over there helping, do what is it's going to take for somebody to get hurt over there, an elderly person, because they can't control that N-word out their mouth? So therefore, I will be here every Wednesday. Only reason I haven't been here, because I've been doing this documentary, and I've been going in and out of hospitals dealing with these heart issues. I have 24 stents in, I have enough stress on my head, then I have to worry about going home, and can't even walk around in my building, have to avoid racist people. So I don't see how y'all going to fix this until you start digging up the old, and dig out that old dirt and put in new dirt, you know what I'm saying? So until then, I'm going to be here, keep doing this, but when this video come out, then we're going to have opinions on what, how this happened, and when it happened. I'm going to tell you about a thing, about a young man that was in jail, and he was calling his parents, and he was calling my friends to come get him, because they was going to kill him the next morning. Well, he died, they killed him. All this needs to come out, because y'all just made me mad, every time I come in here to talk to y'all, or I was trying to talk to Bruce Groeger, five years ago, the man wouldn't even come out and talk to me. Somebody else came out and talked to me, but he would never come. So other than that, if he would have came out and listened to what I had to say, I wouldn't be standing here today. And that's all I got to say. So Mayor and Chief of Police, y'all have, y'all have the ability, the strength to change racism in the state of Iowa, if you really wanted to help this situation, you really wanted to help the black folk. Because in my building, when you hear their stories, and you see them on a documentary, you will understand what they're talking about, because the Quasi-Ditans is still trying to knock us down and not help us.
Mr. Shorter, please finish.
I'm done. I'll be back Wednesday.
And you know, me and you just had a real good conversation yesterday. We've had 10 conversations.
But you cut it short when I start talking about topic.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
I'll be back Wednesday.
Anyone else?
It's been a long meeting. I feel good about council members, Mayor. Thanks so much, I'm proud of the devotion that you have to everyone in our city, and making a city that everyone can look up to, so, types of things I'm talking about. In the, in the general scheme of things, maybe very small, buildings and architecture and city design, but on the other hand, it's kind of, if you're going to Europe, if there were no buildings, if there were no cathedrals, if you're going to Manhattan, if there was no Empire State Building, or San Francisco Bridge, no, you wouldn't be going there. So they have an importance. So I think I want to talk about today, just very briefly, is the ballpark renovations, I talked about it last week, the $5 million. If it takes $5 million to meet the standards, let's go ahead and spend it, but on the other hand, if it's a need to have, let's spend it, if it's a nice to have, maybe we should spend it, what is, what if it's level three, which is, for crying out loud, they're doing that, and my question would be regarding the luxury skyboxes, when I grew up, there was no such thing in our ballparks, because everybody, there were better seats than there were seats, but everybody was out in the, in the heat. Air conditioning for the luxury skyboxes, I thought they were air-conditioned, and actually they are, and they have been. And how often are they used? Well, a couple hours a week, you know, a few weeks a year. So why are they pulling them out? It's because the people that are using those, they want something different, they want to be entertained, just the plain ceilings in there just aren't going to work. They want it to be like a bar where you've got exposed ducks and running through, and the owner of the ball team wants to spend that kind of money, well, that's fine for those two people, I don't think the city needs to come up with the money for that. Do our skyboxes meet big league standards? Well, in one case, they don't, because big league skyboxes rent for between $6,000 and $20,000 a night, and that doesn't even include the food and beverages. So I think, I looked at the websites for the Red Sox, the Cubs, and the Kansas City Royals, and do they have exposed ducks in their skyboxes? No, they've got a nice hung ceiling like we have. That's what people expect, and if you want to spend, you know, tear out that and make it different than what the big leagues have, well, I think the average person would say, "What the heck are you doing that for? Let's, let's put a pause on letting, spend the money for something that everybody in the city uses, not just the people that are in the luxury skyboxes." And to that end, I say, you know, spend that $100,000 for the Rascal sculpture, that everybody's going to love, whether they come to the game or not, it becomes a roadside attraction, people are going to pull over the freeway and, and check it out. So one, the other thing, there was some mention today about the first bridge project and the city's participation in it. I think providing the money for the geotechnical report for the soils that the bridge is going to be bearing on, that's a pretty paltry. to be bearing on, that's a pretty paltry contribution from the city of Davenport. This is, this is the kind of thing that people coming off the boat are going to be looking at first, on, you know, if that bridge is there or not there, a year or two years from now, it makes a big difference. And so I think I'd like the city to reconsider spending some more money toward that, and maybe we take the money out of that for the ballpark, or spend that money in the ballpark for something everybody else will use. And then the other thing, I happened to drive by, you remember when I talked about the habitat houses on E6? There is a little bit of rehabilitation and good work going on on E6, but one of the things you notice on E6, so you see the mansion on top, Leclerc Mansion. So I did what I usually do, I just drove up to check to see how it is these days, and the paint is peeling on it, the grass is mowed, there is kind of a really inappropriate building, a house right next to it, that perhaps it ultimately needs to come down. But I think the Leclerc Mansion is the kind of thing to be a real tourist attraction. It's a beautiful mansion, you sit out there in the front, and you see this wonderful view of the new bridge, the whole Quad City area. It needs to be given a portion of preeminence in our, in our, in our city, and we need to spend some money to make it better. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, okay.
I'm Jane Dux, I live in the 5th Ward of Davenport. I want to talk about the Juvenile Assessment Center, or is it not a building, it's a program? Kind of thinking, Mike, I want to say thanks so much for championing it after Frank Clips kind of got the start ball rolling, and Police Chief Skudorski. It's funny, I came across some notes from when, I started the Juvenile Justice Coalition with Quad Cities almost four years ago, after going to a panel discussion at St. Ambrose by St. Ambrose Diversity Group and Progressive Action for the Common Good on racial disparities in the justice system. And it was all local people that were part of this panel, and I went and met with all of them one by one to talk about juvenile justice. And we had Police Chief Skudorski come back in 2018 to our coalition meeting, and one of the things I wrote down was a definition, the program philosophy, and explained how the team, it was a Scott County team of people that were working on the Juvenile Assessment Center idea back then. And the only person from the city that I have written down was Police Chief Skudorski. I still see that's the only name written down that's working on this, and I guess I'm looking for some clarity, you know, who's meeting on this, you know. But he wrote down, I wrote down the definition, coordinated site which contributes to the safety of youth, families, and community through early intervention, comprehensive assessment, and improved access to appropriate services in Scott County. I think that's fabulous, you know, and I don't know if that's still the definition of what the Juvenile Assessment Center and/or Youth Assessment Program, I'm not clear, and I'm looking for some clarity if I could, you know, get it. And I don't know who to talk to, because I've talked to different, you know, well, and you've come to our court, you know, and we got off on a tangent, I was on the phone with ROTC, but, you know, I called the city administrator's office trying to get a copy of the grant that was written second quarter, and third quarter got denied for $170,000, I'm wanting a copy of, that was six weeks ago after our word meeting when I, you know, and I haven't heard back from the city administrator's office, you know, I'd like to, so anyway, so can you clarify for me and others who are wanting to know, you know, are the people that are serving on the Youth Assessment Program, formerly the Juvenile Assessment Center Task Force, and how they differ, or are they the same, from the people who serve on the Juvenile Detention and Alternative Advisory Committee that's basically being convened by world architects and justice planners as subcontractors, world architects, world architects, excuse me, that's looking at building, well, now a 40-bed juvenile detention center instead of a 64-bed juvenile detention center? Are they one of the same? Because I also saw a PowerPoint presentation where the people on that task force feel like the Juvenile Assessment Center and the Juvenile Detention Center should be co-located. And, you know, but I had a good conversation, and I commend that we're using United Way as our fiscal agent for the million dollars from his apartment building, you know, and four, $5 million is going to go renovate the River Banda Stadium, is that what I heard? No. But, you know, are they being co-located? Because I saw a PowerPoint presentation from April 1st, minutes from the Juvenile Detention and Alternative Advisory Committee, of which the only city of Davenport employee or staff, not even any staff, is Police Chief Skudorski that sits on this. There are a couple of community members, but I've asked Phil and different people to be part of this since the beginning, when Frank Clips was championing it, as people on our Juvenile Justice Coalition group has asked to be part of it, you know, and so can any, who do I talk to? Who do I find out? Are they the same? Or is there something different? Is there a separate task force? And who is going to make the decision? One, you know, there was supposed to be a meeting today that United Way was putting on for the agencies that were going to apply for this million-plus dollars to run the Youth Assessment Program. It's not a building, it's a program, is what Renee Gellerman said with United Way. So I'm so confused, you know, and I'd like to know, you know, Carrie Abbott with United Way said that the email a week ago went out just locally.
So finish up, Mrs. Dux, please. We can talk sometime. We don't dialogue at this point, we're just here to listen.
And so I just, I need to know who to talk to, you know, I've talked to a few of you, and you don't know. And some of you have said, I'll get back to you, and I never got any answers back. And so who do I talk to? You, I talk to you? Let's make an appointment for when? Next week, this week?
Just do it, because we talk, we can talk again. Anyone else?
Dan Ghost, again, I'm the 8th Ward, I'm also the president of Davenport North Little League, and I wanted to thank you all for your continued partnership with Little League. We have five little leagues in Davenport, and you've got an awesome parks and rec department. Betsy Tubbs and Don Allen help us all out a lot. I like to end my meetings on a positive note, so I'm trying to give you something positive here. Little League already started, so Monday through Friday, at any one of our parks, you can come out, games start at 6:00, so feel free to come out and watch that and grab a bag of popcorn or a hot dog. Now, ended on a positive note for you.
Dan, we're always positive, we just have really cool discussions. Anyone else? Okay, motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? Thank you, have a good evening.